Meeting to order on Monday. My goodness, September the 16th, is that right? Yep. Welcome everyone, glad that everyone's here. Pastor B. Dewayne Harden of the Embassy, which is 810 Church Street. Are you out there amongst the multitudes? He's not. Corky, would you mind giving the invocation, leadership and pledge of flag? Would you please rise?
Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this evening. We thank you for this group of citizens. We thank you for this mayor and council, Lord, that we've all come out this evening to hear the business of the city. We just ask that you be with us on the city council this evening, Lord, and the mayor, as we go through about taking on the business of this city, the great city of Smyrna. We just ask that the decisions we make tonight will be in your honor, in your name, in your name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to their republic, for we to stand one nation, under God, indivisible, just like the justice for all.
Item two is agenda changes, and we don't have any. Under the mayor's report, we have a proclamation in recognition for Kings Springs Elementary, a 2012 School of Excellence. I know that Ms. Keeney is here, Dale Gaddis is here from the school board, and there's, I guess, all these other people. Corky Welch has that, and I would ask y'all, please, just to come up to the podium. This is a big day for the school and the city and for the county and for the world and for the universe. While they're coming up here, I will tell you this, that we had two hits in a month. One of them weighed, we had the teacher of the year from Campbell Middle School, and now the School of Excellence, which is a wonderful honor. Linda, you want to, before you read it, yeah, let her introduce you. Hey, this looks like a bunch of women.
Hey, man, that's what's rocking at Kings Springs Elementary. Now, we have some wonderful men teachers, too. But these are members of our leadership team. They're all teachers at Kings Springs. Allison Powell is a fourth grade teacher. Pamela Wilford is a third grade teacher. Kristi Nixon is a first grade teacher. Patricia Calvin-Thomas is a fifth grade teacher. You know, Mr. Gaddis. Laura Meyer is my assistant principal, and Ms. Camp is my ESOL teacher. And all of these people have been at Kings Springs, we think, at least 12 to 15 years, which is one of the reasons that I feel like we got this award. We have teachers that stay with us all the time, and all of these ladies believe that all kids can learn at high levels, and that's why I think we received this award. Thank you.
Mr. Welch?
Thank you. Welcome all of you, and congratulations. And I know of at least three children my age that have gone through and are now teachers at...
Kings Springs.
Yes.
Yes.
So, at this point, let me read a proclamation by the mayor and city of Smyrna, mayor of the city of Smyrna, in recognition of Kings Springs Elementary School, 2012 Georgia School of Excellence. Whereas on August 13th, 2013, state school superintendent, Dr. John Barge, named Smyrna's Kings Springs Elementary School, a 2012 Georgia School of Excellence. And whereas this honor was bestowed upon 28 schools that have shown the highest performance or highest progress across the state. And whereas Kings Springs Elementary was the only school in Smyrna to make the list earning a highest progress designation based on its college and career-ready performance index. And whereas Kings Springs Elementary will receive a $1,000 check from Georgia Natural Gas to be used however the school officials wish. And whereas, under the inspired direction of Principal Linda Keeney, Kings Springs Elementary School was garnered this coveted distinction through the diligence and focus of its team of highly qualified education professionals. Therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, mayor of the city of Smyrna in the state of Georgia, do hereby proclaim Monday, September 16th, 2013, as a day of recognition for the facility and staff of Kings Springs Elementary School, and encourage all the city residents, officials and staff to congratulate them on their accomplishments and contributions to the community.
And I forgot, the best media specialist in Cobb County is back there taking pictures. Beth Tobe.
Dale, do you want to say anything? I won't say anything bad, but...
You won't say anything yet.
Please do, I know you want to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. Kings Springs is one of the number of community schools in Smyrna, and the support that the city gives us is without equal. And I want you to know that we're very proud of Kings Springs and all that they've accomplished. For this progress has been unprecedented in the last several years, and our school of Kings Springs measures and bypasses many, many schools in Cobb County. So, thank you very much.
Thank y'all very much. Our people don't know this, and Linda doesn't, but Linda's been my sister since I was born. And I'm very proud of her. She does a great job, and she loves her job, she loves her kids, she loves her students and her staff and her teachers, and she's old, but she needs to, but she's got to have something to do. So, thank you. Yeah, thank y'all so much.
I'll get him later.
Who's that? Linda? No, she's not saying, no, she didn't want to say anything else. She's done.
I think she said everything she needed to.
She might have wanted to, but... Item four is land issues, zonings and annexations, and item A is a Z-13-013. It's a public hearing zoning request, Z-13-013, rezoning from LC Conditional to CBD Conditional, 0.4 acre tract, land lot 523, 1306 Concord Road. Tara Stewart is the applicant here. Okay, I'm going to get Mr., you can come down, but I'm going to get Mr. Taylor to give us the background on it.
Mr. Mayor, this is, as you mentioned, this is a zoning request to rezone from LC, Linda Commercial Conditional to Central Business District Conditional for land located at 1306 Concord Road. The existing building on the site is currently vacant, has been for the last several years. The applicant is proposing to renovate and add on to the existing building for the proposed use of a live-work unit, which will include a residential unit and a performing arts studio on the main floor. The applicant is also proposing to construct six parking spaces to accommodate the business generated by the performing arts studio. These parking spaces will be accessed from Dunn Street. This property was rezoned by mayor and council on May 16th, 2011, from R-15 to LC Conditional by vote of seven to zero. And it was heard by the planning zoning board at the August 12, 2013, meeting and was recommended for approval by a vote of three to zero. The staff does recommend approval.
Okay, the applicant is here. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to, that would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning request? At the record show, there is none. This is in Mr. Welch's ward, and I'm sure he'll want Mr. Sudrith to come up and...
Ken or Rusty? Either.
Oh, Rusty's not going to, Rusty will just, you get the computer going, that's what Rusty does.
I guess I'd just like, before you fill in any gaps that...
I'll make a deal with you. Next month Rusty will be here, and I'll go home. Mr. Taylor has outlined what the request is all about. This property has been rezoned a couple times. We've had a couple different proposed uses on it, and this one, I actually think, stands a really good chance of occurring. It is an existing single-family home. To do this live-work unit that's being proposed, we do need to change it into a CBD conditional It is at the corner, if you look up on the map, it is at the corner of Dunn and Concord Road. This is the proposed site plan. The six parking spaces were referenced. They will be in the back. There is also a proposed garage, so there'll be a driveway off of that parking lot. So, they are adding a living unit to this and turning the existing structure, which won't have a lot of changes from the street, into the studios. This is the proposed elevation and the proposed floor plan. These are the photos of the subject property as it stands today, and the adjacent photos. And the recommendation is for approval with the standard conditions, which have to do with sidewalk and stormwater detention and dumpsters, as well as, we have prohibited some uses. Most of these conditions have been rolled over from the previous approvals, so there should be no surprises here. We are asking that, if you look at 10 and 11, that the elevations that have been submitted are the ones that will now become the site plan and the elevations we will use in the future. And having said that, let me leave you back here on the proposed site plan.
Thank you. Ms. Stewart, is there anything that you'd like to add to what these gentlemen have spoken of? Could you tell us just a little bit about your business?
Do you like me to tell you about this? What can I tell you about my business?
Just tell us what you, a little bit about the studio that you're going to put in.
So, I'm a singer. I've been performing all my life, and I'd actually never set out to coach. It kind of found me. And I really have started my business from my home. I didn't consider a business about 10 years ago, and just really enjoyed coaching people. It grew without really any advertisement, just word of mouth. And at that point, it was in Greenville, South Carolina, and we moved to Atlanta for a job for my husband. And again, we still did it from the home, and we got bigger and bigger, and then we had to move into Mount Perrin Church, which is where we're located right now. And we love being there, but I'm constantly locked out because they're really high security. So, we just really, we need a space to grow. And by growth, that means a lot of different things. Something that's different about my studio is that we do one-on-one private lessons, and we coach in the art areas of piano, voice, songwriting, acting, studio recording, audition preparation, and artist development. But every single one of our arteries that we represent, we also coach students all over the world and all over the nation via Skype. So, I would say 30 to 40% of our student body now is online and don't even come to the space. So, growth doesn't necessarily mean bodies even in the building. Growth means numbers, whether it be online or in the actual space. Did that answer your question?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Ms. Simon, could you just tell us a little bit about your singing background and...
Sure.
...highlights?
Yeah, absolutely. So, well, like a lot of people say, I've been singing since I was three, started in church, and I went to a performing arts high school, sang all over for pastors' conferences in Africa and in Ireland and lots of places around the world. And then I moved to New York the day I turned 18 to do Broadway, and I did. My first role was the leading role in Fame, and I toured Europe doing that. And then, most recently, I was top 24 in The X Factor last season on television and learned how awesome editing is. So, not only do I coach my students in how to be great performers, but also how to now be aware of the trials and the manipulative nature of the entertainment industry, and just how they can make someone that sweet, who may be animated in the face, look like they're crazy on television. So, it's something that I consider to be a really big need and something that a lot of people don't even know exists, because unless you were there and were through it, you don't even know that it's going on. You're just watching it and thinking, oh, my gosh, I can't believe she just did that. So, it's something that we train our students to be aware of, and our students tend to go on and do awesome things, but also, most importantly, stand the test of time, because it's a really hard industry, and especially if you're a Christian and if you love the Lord, to succeed in this and remain intact with your moral fiber is quite a feat.
Another question, if this is approved, what kind of timeline do you have for renovating the house and...
Yeah.
...the yard and moving in and operating?
Mm-hmm. I would, I would love to be at least operational in the commercial space by February or March. I told our contractor that our lease is up in April in our current spot in Smyrna, and I really don't want to extend it. So, I would love nothing more than to be in it, operational and living in there by March, but I've gotten some looks like I'm crazy. So, I don't know yet, to be honest. They've been kind of waiting to give me a firm estimate and finish up any finalizations based on this meeting, so I haven't gotten a firm answer on that. But I would love to be in by February, March. I'd love to be in tomorrow, frankly.
Any other questions? Anybody else? Corky?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the rezoning request, Z-13-013, rezoning from LC Conditional to CBD Conditional, 0.4 acre tract, land lot 523 at 1306 Concord Road.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve this zoning request. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Welch, that's subject to all the conditions laid out by staff.
Yes, I'd like to amend the motion to make it subject to the conditions that were set forth by community development.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That is approved, seven to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Welcome to Smyrna.
Good luck.
Item 4B, under land issues, zones, and annexations, a public hearing zoning request, Z-13-016, approval of zoning amendment to modify the currently approved site plan and building elevations, 8.03 acre tract, land lot 690, 691. Jason A. Lewis is the applicant. He's here. Mr. Taylor, will you please give us the background, please?
Mr. Mayor, the mayor and council annexed and rezoned the subject property on December 15th, 2008 by a vote of five to two. And tonight, the issue is up for, it's an approval of a zoning amendment to modify the currently approved site plan and building elevations at 4840 Hanson Drive for this assisted living facility. The modifications are to the terrace level. The applicant is requesting to eliminate the structure parking under the building and also to modify the access drive and to modify the building elevations. Community development has reviewed this and does recommend approval of this zoning amendment.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this amendment to the zoning request? At the record show, there is none. This is in Mr. Ron Fennels' district, and I'm sure he wants...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've addressed this particular property and its application twice before as a council, once in 2008 when we approved the original proposal, and then we've modified it once since then. We now have a revision to that second modification. Out of the abundance of caution, we wanted to bring it before council. Mr. Sudrith, would you mind giving the background, or just so that we have all the details on the table?
Yes, sir. Currently, the site is vacant, as has been stated. We have dealt with a proposed use back in 2008. We have made some administrative modifications to the facade of the building, and this actually gives a little bit more, as Ron said, because of the increase in the number of beds that are being proposed. It is on South Cobb. On the map here, it's the one that's sort of cross-titched, sort of a pinkish-violet, purplish color on the screen. It's there. There's actually sort of two hills with a valley in between. You will see this on the site plan. This amendment will only affect one side of that original approval. So, we are changing from 78 beds to 108 beds, as well as modifying the elevations. This is the currently approved site plan, and what's outlined in red is the area that is scheduled to be changed. As I mentioned earlier, there are sort of two sides to this development. There is a flood plain in between the two high spots, and we're only dealing with this one side. It is for an assisted living facility. This is the proposed site plan, and these are the building elevations. Again, the assisted living elevations, just from different sides. You can see from this side that there's actually, depending on which side of the building you're on, it's actually can be three stories, because they've added in a terrace level, which has resulted in the increased number of beds. Pictures of the subject property, as I said, it really hasn't been developed. Staff recommendation is for approval. This means that we are rolling over this previous approvals. Again, the standard conditions apply. What's important here is that all of these remain the same until we actually get down to condition 26, where again, we are substituting the site plan. That was originally dated 11/5/08 to the new plan for the independent seating and living facility and the assisted living facility dated 8/9/2013, as well as those elevations that we have looked at. Everything else on this remains the same. There is a list of uses, you can see in 28, of uses that are not permitted. The applicant is here, and I'm sure he'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. And I will leave you back on the site plan.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sudrith. Mr. Lewis, if you'd like to talk about your project and what you're asking?
Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. This project first came before you in 2008, as has been said. We were looking for an opportunity to serve the seniors in an assisted living facility with a continuing care Phase II in the back. We're going to proceed with just the assisted living portion at this time for market conditions, and we feel that the original plan included 78 beds, not to be confused with number of rooms, based on a number of double occupancies. We've made the change at this point to accommodate the site better. We were going to wind up with a 55-foot tall retaining wall to the rear, and not only did that create a cost issue, it also lost the opportunity to put those extra rooms, instead of in double occupancies, overlooking the park in single occupancy. So, it gives a better overall feel for the residents that will be there. It allows the operator an easier flow, so that they're creating more living spaces or central hallways rather than long corridors. And it allows us to open up a terrace in the center there that you can see on the site plan, that will also allow sightlines as you enter the front door. You have the appearance from South Cobb of a two-story facility, but you look out over the park into the tree line. We've also committed to create a roughly 35% total area green space buffer that will be a conservation easement of some description, whether it be in the deed restriction or whether it be in a true conservation easement. As we proceed through construction on this, we'll begin the diligence on the Phase II portion and hope to be before you on that early next year.
Very good. I did have one question. Your timeline for construction and completion?
We will be submitting final blueprints within two weeks, three weeks on the outside, and we plan to break ground before the holidays.
Awesome. And the completion date anticipated?
Eight to 10 months is construction time after we get a pad site. Another point, the financing is in place. We were using the bond hearing, using Cobb County Bonding Authority. We had our public hearing last Tuesday, and that passed without opposition.
Right. How many employees would that bring to this location?
60 to 70 in the first phase.
Thank you. Other questions on the panel?
Mr. Lewis, what, you mentioned the second phase. What would be the second phase and your thoughts on that?
We have it planned for a mixed use with a commercial on the first floor. The site still lends itself for that very well. In our initial plan, we had the first floor at 70,000 square feet for a retail mixed-use service. We don't believe the market justifies 70,000 square feet at this point, so we have a new study being commissioned to study that specifically. More than likely, we'll move to reduce that by about 50%. There'll be a mix of medical office, there'll be a dry cleaner, apothecary, we're talking to. The key is, is it will be services that the seniors above would want to use. We envision a courtyard as well tied with a footbridge between the two facilities. That was in our original plan, that continues through. That would also be reason why we wanted to commit to the conservation easement format. No matter whether I change in the deal or not, that commitment to council will continue to stand through, as that's been recorded in our contracts.
And in the initial phase, you're planning on having both assisted living and Alzheimer's disease care rooms?
Correct. There will be 23, a minimum of 23 memory care. The rest of them will be a mix dependent on a couple of things in planning. But it will be a typical assisted living with a memory care component. As you need it, you move into it.
Yeah. I would encourage you to work very closely with the Fire Marshal's Office and obviously the Community Development Department to make sure as you prepare your plans and get underway that local fire regulations and state fire regulations pertaining to these homes are kind of confusing to interpret, and our folks can help you hopefully stay on the right side of the interpretation. But just be aware, that'll, that's always been kind of an interesting topic with the State Fire Marshal's Office.
You'll be pleased to know we're using the same construction technique, concrete and structural steel, as would be in a hospital. We're using fire suppression throughout the facility, so it's built the same standard as a hospital, the highest rating, fire rating, we can. And at the same time, we're assuming the assistance of city planning has just been spectacular, and we can count on that continued effort with them as we submit these plans. The Fire Marshal has given us very good feedback so far, and we've been very, very proud to be here with the Community Development Director. Mr. Sudrith has really been a help with that.
Great. And of course, you're literally just down the street from Fire Station Four, Smyrna Station Number Four, so...
Directly across. So, keep a close eye on us, right?
Other questions?
Yes. Did I hear either you or Ken say before there was a parking deck in the plan before, and there isn't a parking deck now? Is that correct?
We had planned to put a lower-level parking deck to accommodate the grade issue. The demand for parking for seniors is substantially less than what you might expect. So, rather than putting a parking deck and losing those views, we were able to put in a surface area parking that served the needs and use rooms below. It's a much better site plan. We have actually more green space in this plan than we did in the initial plan. And it was just as we got closer toward final engineering that we were able to work that detail out.
Okay. And is it sufficient parking for what is, for this type of a center? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Thank you.
And thank you for investing in Smyrna. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Z-13-016 and hereby close the public hearing.
I have motion second to approve the...
And I'll read the zoning request, Z-13-016, approval of zoning amendments to modify the currently approved site plan and building elevations, 8.03 acre tract, land lot 690 and 691, attendant to the attachments and stipulations provided by the Community Development Department, and so move approved.
First motion you made was to close the public hearing, right?
I thought we did that, yes. Did we not take a vote?
Yeah, I don't think you have to do that. You just have to make your motion. So, your motion is to approve the zoning...
Yes, sir.
...with stipulation, right?
Please.
Give a second on that.
Do we have...
Corky? Okay.
So, it says on...
All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approved seven to zero. Okay. Thank you very much. It's approved.
Thank you.
Item C, under our public hearings and zoning... Item C under our public hearings and zonings and amendments is public hearing approval of ordinance 20-13-10 annexation requests, 100% of owners requesting annexation landlots 624, 625, 1.24 acre parcel number 1606240040, 17th District, Second Section, Cobb County, 3920 Ridge Road. Notice of non-objection has been received from Cobb County. Mr. Tate of the background, please.
Mr. Mayor, the applicant... The applicant is seeking approval to annex a 1.24 acre property at 3920 Ridge Road. This is an annexation via the 100% annexation method. The use will remain residential, and no rezoning action for these parcels are being requested. The property is contiguous to the city and will be incorporated into Smyrna Ward Six. Cobb County has been notified, and as you noted during the title there, that the notice of non-objection has been received from Cobb County. Therefore, we do recommend approval with an effective date of October 1st.
Is the applicant by any chance here? This is listed on our agenda as a public hearing, although our city attorney has advised us it doesn't necessarily have to be a public hearing, but since it is, since we've got it listed, then we will do that. Is there anyone here in opposition too or would like to make any comment concerning this annexation? At the break of show, there is none. This is Mr. Wade Lenika's for... Mr. Lenika?
Thank you, Your Honor. The background on this is pretty straightforward. Steve and Lori Osborne are occupying the site of the home that Steve grew up in. His mother passed away a couple of years ago. He's become the owner through the estate of her home site. He has already applied for and received a demolition permit from Cobb County and demolished the older home that was on this property, and he plans to build a new home located within the city limits of Smyrna, which is where he said he grew up, where his heart is and where he wants to come back to. He's living in North Cobb now. So it's great to see, you know, a local guy want to come back to Smyrna. He misses it. Do we have any questions by council? If not, I'm going to move to approve ordinance 2013-10 and annexation requests, 100% of the owners requesting annexation in landlots 624 and 625, total of 1.24 acres, parcel number 16062400040, located in the 17th District, Second Section of Cobb County, address being 3920 Ridge Road. Make it a part of Ward Six. Effective October 1st.
Okay. Second?
Motion second to approve this annexation request. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Item five is privileges licenses. We have none. Item six is formal business. We have one item under formal business. That's approval. Approve official payments as credit card processors for online payments through Citizen Self-Service. Mr. Tate of the background, please.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think most people are familiar with the fact that the city has been rolling out a new financial software system over the last year or so, and one of the latest modules that we're rolling out is one for Citizen Self-Serve, which will allow citizens to make payments online. In order to do this, we have to have a processor for the credit cards. And after looking at the various options, staff is wanting to recommend approval of official payments as a credit card processor. And what they will do is pass along a 2.55% fee for credit card use and $1 for debit card. Currently, the city eats these charges, and so we wanted to go ahead and pass these on to the folks who actually pay their property taxes with credit cards. And so that's what we're recommending, to approve official payments as the credit card processor.
This is under Ms. Taranowicz, committee of finance and administration. Ms. Nudowich?
Yes, I wonder if Ms. Toni Jo Howard would like to come forward and explain a little bit more about this, or has it all been... Now, and I will say, this is a pilot program, so you won't be able to use a credit card yet to pay your water bill, but you will be able to use it to pay your property taxes, right?
Correct. Once we get it actually set up, then you will be able to use it for the credit card payments. This would only be for people that actually go on the City of Smyrna website, click on the property to pay their property tax, and then enter their credit card or debit card information to do that. So at this point, it's specifically limited to that. However, it could be utilized in the future for other munis modules that we use that we could take payments for.
Like permits, water bills?
Yes.
Things like that? Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Howard?
I had a quick question.
Sure.
Currently, the city pays for this processing to the tune of what dollar amount on an annual basis?
I don't have it broken down specifically just for the property tax.
Approximation?
The information that I had was for the general fund, which would include some other processes that we take credit cards for, such as court services and some parks and rec fees. But the general fund has about $65,000 that we pay annually for credit card fees.
So we pay the processing company for transactions that, in this case, would then have the transaction convenience paid for by the user?
Right.
Rather than them writing a check, which is free?
Right.
We process that for free, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for that, ma'am. At this time, then, I would like to move to approve item 6A. It's item 2013-326. This is to approve official payments as the credit card processor for online payments through Citizen Self-Serve.
Have motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's five to two. Let's see if I can try to figure who voted for it and who didn't. Is that done? It's not coming up. Oh, Mr. ... Okay, there it is. Susan Wilkerson, Mr. Lenika voted against it. Okay, that's approved, five to two. Okay. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item A is consent agenda. Mr. Tate, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
We have seven items on the consent agenda this evening. Item A is an approval of September 3, 2013, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is to award RFP 14-005 for the Ann Road Stormwater Drainage Project to the lowest bidder, Topol Construction and Engineering Incorporated, for $172,195, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item C is to award RFP 14-006 for the Woodruff Drive Stormwater Drainage Project to the lowest bidder, D&amp;H Construction Company, for $53,250.50, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item D is to authorize the mayor to execute a facility encroachment agreement with CSX Transportation. It's agreement number CSX 746575. Item E is an approval of road closures for the Smyrna Beer Fest, October 12, 2013, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. in the Market Village. Item F is an approval of road closures for the Fifth Annual 5K Run and 1K Spooktacular Chase on Saturday, October 19, from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And the last item is an approval of road closures for Survival Fest on September 28, 2013, where roads will be closed beginning at 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Your motion, we approve the consent agenda. Motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved seven zero. Item nine is committee reports. We'll start tonight. Mr. Ron Fennel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For public safety, I'd like to ask Chief David Lee to come give a police update. While he's coming, please remember, as you encounter our public safety officials, whether it's someone who works in 911, a park ranger, a police officer, or firefighter, I hope you would join me in thanking them for what they do every day in our community. Chief Lee?
Thanks, sir. What I'd like to do is give you an update. We are finally in our 911 center at full strength, which is a blessing. The last couple of people that we did hire come to us with experience, and that's always real good. It helps the... Cuts the training period time down quite substantially. We still have about five more police officer positions. We've recently hired two, I think I told you all about, we got from another jurisdiction, and they're already both been released and working on a solo status. So we're getting there. But other than that, that's all I have. Any questions?
Good promotions recently. Thank you for that ceremony that allowed those officers to be recognized properly for the next rank in their careers.
Thanks, sir. I know they greatly appreciate the ceremony, especially getting their loved ones to get to come pin that badge on. And no blood was spilled, so that was a good thing. Thank you.
All good. Thank you very much. Chief Akry?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
You guys work 24/7, 365, day, night, doesn't matter, does it?
Yeah, I get a little confused sometimes. Sorry about that. But I just wanted to take a minute to let everybody know about some pretty exciting stuff that we've got coming up. As you all know, September is National Preparedness Month. You also know that one of the fantastic things about emergency management here in the Smyrna... Public Safety here in the City of Smyrna is that we have our own emergency management agency. Part of our responsibility is preparedness. We, along with the state through the Ready Georgia Campaign, for several years now have pushed out and disseminated some really good preparedness information as well as we could. But this year, we have partnered with FEMA to really take it up a notch, so to speak. And let me kind of tell you what we're going to do. Beginning this month with the press conference that'll be here at this facility at the end of the month, we're going to kick off a new preparedness initiative that FEMA has called Prepare-thon. And essentially, and simply put, Prepare-thon is going to allow us as emergency management agency to provide opportunities in ways that our community, from its individual citizens to its business owners, its churches, daycares, to encourage these citizens of businesses to put into practice preparedness initiatives. So instead of just disseminating preparedness information, we're going to go out and we're going to help individual citizens and neighborhood associations better prepare through drills and exercises. We're going to reach out to the business community to help them to plan things like shelter in place. You know, if we're all at our places of business, what do we do if there is a need to shelter in place due to a tornado warning or any type of severe weather? So one thing that we have that should be live by next week that's going to help us to put the word out is a website. The website will be readysmyrna.com. We're about seven days away from that being live, so in the meantime, you can visit readygeorgia.gov to learn more about this. Also, one other bit of information that's related is I'm proud to announce that on Thursday, September 26, the Fire Department will have its inaugural Citizens' Fire Academy. It'll be every Thursday night from 6:00 to 9:00 for nine weeks. We will be accepting applications within the... By the close, business on Friday on the Smyrna City website through the fire page. So we're excited about that. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Any questions of the chief? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Mr. Lenika?
Thank you, Your Honor. Kay Bullock, our HR director, has a brief report to give us about online applications.
Well, I think we have finally worked out most, if not all, of the bugs, and we are now 100% online application process. It took us a while to get there with the new system, but we are there. We've had, I think, three or four jobs that we've been testing the last two or three openings, and supervisors seem to enjoy being able to get to the applications a lot better. It's streamlining it. We have reduced our paper flow coming in, so we've become green. We're really excited about that. So from now on, if anyone is out there interested in applying for jobs, go to smyrnatcity.com, follow the links to either the HR department, and you'll see the employment side there, or click on "I Want to Apply For." It'll take you right to wherever jobs we have available, and you can click from home and put in the application, attach your resume, cover letter, and it's in our system. And we get to store them indefinitely that way. So we are really excited. All future applications will be taken that way. We have two kiosks also in our department. If they want to come in, if they think they're coming in to fill out an application, we've got staff that'll sit down with them, show them how to do it online, sit there with them, get them all the way through the process. So we just want to let people know that that's our way of getting to us now.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to thank the public safety departments and specifically the Public Safety Foundation, the Smyrna Public Safety Foundation, for the Heroes Gala this past Friday night at Bronner Hall. That was, as always, an excellent event. I know a lot of citizens and business folks put an awful lot of work into that, and it very much showed. Saturday, I attended a ceremony at Davin's Air Reserve Base, which is very much like a funeral. I think veterans will understand me when I say because of budget cuts, there was a formal deactivation ceremony for one of the units stationed there. And I fear this will be the first of many that we will see. Just thinking globally and not locally a little bit, we as a country need to be very careful about cutting back our resources so in future events, when we need them, we actually have a military present and capable of doing their duty of protecting our nation and our way of life. It's always very sad to see a unit that's been here for 60 years deactivated, colors furled, cased, and it was a very emotional day for the air national guardsmen involved. Finally, I know the Taste of Smyrna was a great event this weekend, a lot going on. Smyrna's a great place to be. Thank you all for living here and helping us. With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkerson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to ask Mary Moore to come and give us the report from the library.
Hi, good evening. We have three special events going on at the library this week. Tomorrow morning, we have two Southern authors coming in. Some of you may be familiar already with Anne Height. She's an award-winning author. Her former book, Ghost on Black Mountain, won Best First Novel at the Georgia Author of the Year Awards, and this is her new book, The Storycatcher. Her talk tomorrow is called "A Conversation with Mountain Women." So she and another Southern author, Karen Spear-Zacharias, are going to be talking through their characters tomorrow. And this is... We have refreshments sponsored by the Friends of the Library, and also book sales courtesy of Book Exchange. Then tomorrow... That's at 10:30 tomorrow, by the way. Tomorrow afternoon at 4:00, we have a family event. We're being visited by Luna the Tooth Fairy. She uses magic, puppets, props, and stories to teach kids all about how to keep their mouth healthy and have a beautiful smile. There is a registration for that event, but there's still some more slots available. If someone wants to call tomorrow, they can still come. And Thursday, did you know, it is International Talk Like a Pirate Day? So we will be hoisting the Jolly Roger over the library on Thursday and having all things pirate on Thursday. So kids can come to the Youth Services Department and pick up a treasure map, and it'll take them to different parts of the library. And then when they've found all the clues, they turn in their map for a prize. And we have not forgotten the adults. Our Mango Languages foreign language tool actually has a module that teaches you how to talk like a pirate. So if you come by the library and watch our little one-minute tutorial on using Mango Languages, you get some pirate booty if you're a grown-up, too. So any questions?
I'm glad to know that Thursday is Talk Like a Pirate Day. I didn't know that.
You can get free donuts if you... On your calendar. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I'd like to ask Steve Ciaccio to come give a report for Parks and Recreation. I'd like to ask Steve Ciaccio to come give a report for Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. This upcoming Saturday is the last of our, after our movies for the season. Gets a little chilly. We tried it in October last year, didn't have a big turnout, so we're going to end it this upcoming Saturday at Taylor Bronner Park, 3180 Atlanta Road. The Disney movie Super Buddies will be featured, so come one, come all. This upcoming fall and winter, there'll be a number of new pottery classes oriented towards kids and some adults. And there's also some new painting classes for kids and adults at the community center. Check the city's website out, City of Smyrna, or I should say smyrna-city.com, or come visit the community center and have a look, see at our fall and winter guide. So, new pottery classes and some new painting classes at the community center, please join us. Any questions?
Arrgh. Not Thursday.
Thank you, Steve. I also want to tell everyone that I'm having a Ward 5 community meeting at the Wolf Center on Saturday, September 28th at 10:00 a.m. So, I hope to see y'all there. Bye.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call on Ms. Ann Kirk with Keith Smyrna, beautiful police.
Thank you very much. I would like to remind everyone that we have two weeks left for our fresh market. We have North Georgia apples. We have lots of grape sauces. We still have really fresh vegetables and soaps and baked goods, so come on out. We've got two more weeks left. You can stock up for your Christmas holiday giving. Over 300 cars dropped off paper and other items at our shredding event on Saturday. We probably took in from 12,000 to 15,000 pounds of paper. It was a very successful event. If you missed it, please call our office at 770-431-2863, and we can give you the name of a company here in Cobb County that will take your paper for free all during the week. Rivers Alive Cleanup will be on October the 5th from 9:00 until noon, and our Adopt a Mile Cleanup will be October 19th from 8:00 until noon. We will stage that from Bronner Hall. If you would like to participate in either of these events, again, please call our office at 770-431-2863. And don't forget that you can recycle your cooking oil. You can put it in a jug, a milk jug will be fine, and set it out at the curb if you have curbside recycling, but you can also take it to the recycling center, and we will take cooking oil as well as used motor oil at that facility. The Georgia WaterSense program has put out a flyer that says that they're having a Georgia sales tax holiday for WaterSense products. This will be from October the 4th through the 6th, starting at midnight on Friday night. What items are available to be, no sales tax? There would be WaterSense labeled toilets, showerheads, faucets, irrigation controllers, and other faucets or accessories. And there's a WaterSense website, if you would like that information, you can also call my office. Thank you very much. Have a great week.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you, Ann. I understand from a good source, it publicly works, does not have a report this evening. I would like to remind everyone that, of course, you can see us without question, Concord Road is under construction. There are barricades. We have some drop-offs on the edge of the pavement. Everyone, please be careful through that direction of road. There's workers along, I saw one this afternoon walking actually along the pavement. Just be careful through there. Keep everybody safe. And if you have any of the citizens that live along there, any complaints, please give me a call. I'll do what I can to try to help you out. Had several regarding some drainage issues and so forth. If those issues have not been corrected, please give me a call back. But, everyone, be careful out there. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Taryn Nullwich.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Jennifer Benedict to give an update from Community Relations.
Thank you. Seems like yesterday we were announcing that the food trucks were rolling in. Pretty soon, they're going to be rolling out. As a friendly reminder that we've got two more nights with the food trucks at Taylor Bronner Park. Tomorrow night, along with our usual food trucks and a couple of new ones, we'll have Smokey's Farm land ban. But remember that our last one is September 24th, and we've had a good time. We hope you have, too. Taste of Smyrna was great. Want to thank everybody who came out and everybody who participated. We had a great time, and the restaurants did a pretty good job. Atkins Park Tavern actually got the best entree, and I think Zuka had the chocolate zucata balls was the best dessert. Best appetizer was from Meehands and Vinings, and there are a couple of others. Copeland's had the best decorated booth, and Buckhead BBQ, best presentation, brisket and pork sliders. It was all wonderful food, and, like I said, the weather, I mean, we had a great time. The weather couldn't have been better. We're expecting great weather tomorrow night, too. So, hope you'll join us. I want to remind you that if you want to keep up with all the things that we do, things that other department heads talked about, following us on Facebook and Twitter is a really good idea. Facebook.com, City of Smyrna GA. But also, if you want to get info about our schools, we've got a Facebook feed for the schools that members of the Smyrna Education Foundation, they feed regular information about what's going on in our schools at Facebook.com/SmyrnaGASchools. And if you're not following that, I highly recommend you do. Any questions?
Saturday was unbelievable.
It was good. And we didn't even have fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to invite Tony Joe Howard to come back up to give a report from the Finance
The property taxes were mailed out today, and the Citizen Self-Serve that we just talked about actually allows for anyone to be able to go on the website and view their tax bill. If you will go to the City of Smyrna's website and go to the finance page on the left side, it'll have a property tax link. If you'll click on that, it'll bring you to a property tax page, and on there you'll see highlighted, for you to click View Property Tax Bills Online, and that will redirect you to that Citizen Self-Serve. Once you're there, if you'll click on Real Estate Property Taxes on the left, then you can enter the information to be able to pull that information up, so you can view your property taxes now online. Additionally, we are currently undergoing our FY13 audit. Hopefully, we will have those audited financial statements ready for y'all the end of October, middle of November timeframe. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, we're going to finish out summer with a bang as we go into fall. And I just wanted to make a note going into fall, October 14th, 2013, at 6:00 p.m., that is when the Planning and Zoning Board is going to review the proposed plan for Johnquill And so, if you have interest in learning more about that, or if you have thoughts on the project, I highly encourage you to attend that Planning and Zoning hearing. Again, that's 6:00 p.m. on the 14th of October here in this room. With that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Mr. Sudrith.
Business is good.
Enough said.
Really, it is. We're running about 16% ahead of last year, on average, and last year, we were running pretty substantial over the year before. So, we are excited about where we are. My last comment is, just about all of the lots that we had sitting on the board, ready to go before the economy turned down, have been absorbed. And we've seen a few developments come through very recently to create new lots. So, there, we are actually getting into a shortage of available lots within the city. That's it.
That's not surprising with the shortage of houses that were available earlier in the year, that now that it's commercial and all, that there would be a shortage there, too. But, hey, it should be a nice spring. So, I have one other comment. For those of you in Ward 2, this Thursday evening, September 19th, I'm having a meeting, a community meeting at the community center at 7:00 p.m. So, I hope if you're in Ward 2 that you'll attend. Thank you. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Mallie Pritchett.
Hello, Mr. Eric Tyler.
Yeah, is Chelsea Jackson still here? Come on up, Chelsea. Don't mean to put you on the spot here, but wanted to go ahead and take an opportunity to welcome one of our newest members of our team here in Smyrna. This is Chelsea Jackson. She was our Management Fellow for the year. She just recently graduated with her Master of Public Administration at Kennesaw State, and today was her first day. And so, hopefully, she'll be back tomorrow and for other days to come through July 1st. So, welcome.
Thank you for having me.
Welcome. Third time. Thank you, Chelsea. Scott Cochran, City Attorney, anything. Terry Graham, City Clerk, anything. We do not have a show cause hearing. Citizens Input, Bill Mathis, 1599 Roswell Street, Smyrna, Georgia. Water is his topic. My name's Bill Mathis. I guess I'm going to be regular around here till I get my water fixed up. They took the ditches out and put a sophisticated draining system in. It doesn't work. Catch basin stops up. They came out and worked two days on the catch basin across the street, come to find out that pipe that goes from that side of the street to my side goes uphill. So, their catch basin has to get about 3/4 full before it will run on my side of the road. So, technically, all that water should be going on the other side of the street where the office and warehousing's at. And I talked to Mr. Stokes about, at the backside of the property where Hawthorne is, they put the curbing in, but they covered up the ditch. So, I've got a lot of water running down my ditch beside my house, going into a non-ditch, which is, makes it a dam. So, not only do I get water in the front yard, I also get it in the backyard. Well, Mr. Stokes said they had to do a survey, and they sent out Croy Engineering. I gave him a picture, well, I gave him a plat of the ditch. And they did most of it the first day. The second day, they came back and told me they had emergency and had to pull off. Well, they ended up on my porch, shooting gratings on my porch, and they asked if they could have permission to cut some shrubbery. I said, yes. And through the front yard, I've got privet heads growing, and they chopped it off at a sharp angle, about that high. So, if you fell on it, you're going to be impaled. I don't know why I can't get somebody to redig the ditch where my water will flow and not flood me in the backyard also. So, till next time, thank you.
Alec Bakri, 3459 Shawnee Trail, Smyrna, Georgia.
Since we're coming to the halfway point of the council's tenure and the end of the year, I thought I'd do a little summation, Mayor, of what's happened in this year in town hall meetings. Rich Golick has had two in Smyrna. Bob Ott has had two. Hunter Hill has had two. Tim Lee has had one. That shows people outside the city, elected officials coming to Smyrna, feeling it's important to broaden the audience and answer questions on the levels that they were elected at. Your record, Mayor, again this year, is zero. When you were elected two years ago, you said you'd have a town hall meeting within 60 days. Last year, it was zero. It's a sad state that we can't have, since it's our money to ask questions and ask why we can't have a town hall meeting with you. I feel no one in front of me is above having town hall meetings to answer questions. When you lose the enthusiasm of answering questions and informing the constituents, it's time to step down and find someone that will. The biggest part of your legacy, Mayor, when you do step down, will be having the worst record that we've had for a mayor at having town hall meetings. And I don't understand why you will not explain to us why you don't feel comfortable in having a town hall meeting where we can ask questions to you as well as anyone else on the council. You have to broaden the audience to get more than 20% out in elections, and it still amazes me how many people I meet in this city that still don't know who the council people are. This is a wonderful opportunity that has not happened again in '13. And I hope this changes, and that maybe by the end of the year, you do have one. Because I just don't understand how that you can keep the constituents in the dark on information or questions that we have. The other mayors and the other counties have them every three, four months. Not here. It's time to open up Smyrna to the citizens. That one we had approximately two, three years ago was only 15 minutes, and we had questions, and we had to write them on a card. Supposedly, we're supposed to get answers in the mail. I'm still waiting for the one I wrote down on a question. And I hope that that'll change, because that's the only one I can remember in years. And if you have time to be a campaign manager for a federal position, you certainly have time to have one in the city, a town hall meeting. Thank you.
Arissa Edwards, 304 Hickory Springs, 30082, New Smyrna.
What happened to Terry? Is she coming back? Is she coming back? You don't know? So, I have an email from a resident in Smyrna, and he emailed you, Mayor, in August '07. And you guys, specifically Terry, she said specifically that she answered emails when people emailed her. Now, I know you guys don't answer phone calls. And so, you don't have town hall meetings, you don't say anything back when we ask you questions, you vote on whatever you want to vote on. The standards are very poor. So, I'm going to give this resident a voice that he wants. His name is Charles Balance. He's at 3880 Cedar Cliff Court. Does anybody, whose district is that? Okay, anyway. He is basically, you know, he's a little perturbed about the decisions that you guys make. And so, I brought a little show and tell today, and it displays the difference between God and Satan, okay? And I know you guys don't want to hear it. Everybody has different views on God, you know, there's different religions and things like that, but everybody knows what Satan is. And you guys, right now, are very satanic, and it's something that I have to point out, okay? When you make decisions, you want to make decisions that are right, mostly right. But right now, you guys make decisions that are mostly not right. How do you know? You make desire-based decisions, not need-based decisions. So, I would like to know whose desire was to purchase Hickory Lakes? Was it a need to purchase that property, or was it a desire? And you guys have to know the difference, because there are a lot of people at stake when you make decisions mostly not right. How many people got it? How many people got a CC copy of this email from Mr. Charles Balance? It was M. Pritchett, A. Bluestein, Terry, C. Welch, Ms. Wilkinson, and W. Munica. Sorry, I don't want to mention names up. I'm really sorry. Is it right or is it not right to ignore the Smyrna residents? Somebody answer me. Is it right or is it not right? Right now, we're being ignored, and we feel it's not right. So if you want to move closer to God, you got to get a little bit more on the right side. It's important, because you will be pretty much forced to step down, Mayor. And I understand you don't want to, but there's really nothing you can do about it, because you got to be right. Have a good evening. Peacemaker for President.
That is the end of the folks that have signed up for Citizens' Input. Is there any other business to be brought for this body? I declare this meeting adjourned at 8:45.